At this time, I will call to order the Tuesday, July 17, 2018, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. And at this time, I'd ask if you would all please bow your head for a few moments of silent prayer or reflection. If you'll please rise and join us with the platitude allegiance.
Platitude allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Jones, if you could please review any adjustments to the agenda?
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We do have two adjustments. One, we have an additional item that will be added under new business. And then, we will be moving one item, which is item 8.6, under administrative matters. That will move up, and we'll, we'll address that item right after the presentation of special recognitions and awards, item 5.1.
Are there any further adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, at this time, we have some presentation of special recognitions and awards. First, we have Mr. Kent Green, who will share with us a resolution that is being proposed to recognize and honor Iredell County amateur radio emergency services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to take this opportunity to personally thank the Board for sponsoring this resolution. A lot of counties don't use their amateur radio operators as extensively as Iredell County does. In the event of a catastrophic failure of our communication systems, these individuals have the ability to communicate when traditional radio systems cannot. So, we definitely rely on these, these folks to support us, and they are more than willing to do that. They have a robust membership in their local club. And we would just like to honor them and recognize them tonight for the contributions they provide to Iredell County and our office in emergency management. If you're pleased, I'd like to go ahead and read the resolution.
I'll go ahead and read it.
Go ahead, sir. Yes.
This is a proposed resolution of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners recognizing and honoring the Iredell County Amateur Radio Emergency Services for their contributions and dedication to supporting Iredell County. And whereas, the amateur radio emergency services consists of licensed amateurs who have voluntarily registered their qualifications and equipment for communications duty in the public service when disaster strikes. And whereas, the members of the Iredell County Amateur Radio Emergency Services are dedicated individuals that provide a critical service in times when other communication methods may fail. And whereas, the members of the Iredell County Amateur Radio Emergency Services are trained, skilled, and equipped with the latest technology acquired at their own expense. And whereas, there are over 31,000 amateur radio emergency service members serving in 47 states and territories. And whereas, amateur radio emergency services is part of the Iredell County Amateur Radio Society, or ICARS, with a membership of 41 amateur radio operators. And whereas, Iredell County Amateur Radio Emergency Services participates in two field day exercises annually, where they are graded against all other participating groups. And whereas, at the 2018 Winter Field Day, Iredell County Amateur Radio Emergency Services was ranked first in the state of North Carolina, first in the section, and seventh in the nation. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move to, we approve this?
Motion to adopt the resolution made by Commissioner Howe. Now, therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners resolves to recognize the hard work and dedication of the men and women of Iredell County Amateur Radio Emergency Services and the consistently strong support of the organization in providing critical emergency radio communications to Iredell County, passed and approved by the Iredell County Board of Commissioners this 17th day of July 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have several of the officers, members, and family members here, if you'd like to address them.
And let's go ahead and have a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Could you all please stand and, and I'll tell you what, if you all could come up and just line up in here, we'd like to get a picture with you, and we can fold in behind you. You guys can just line up right in front of here.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations on your award.
Very impressive, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Well, we want to thank you all. Appreciate it. That is truly impressive results in terms of the competition, and we, we sleep better knowing that you guys are standing by. So, thanks a lot. At this time, we will take out of order, as, as Jones mentioned, item 8.6, which is a request from the Fire Services and Emergency Management to finalize approval for the transfer of the Anniston subdivision from South Iredell Fire Insurance District to the Mountmoren Fire Insurance District. Any comments on that, Mr. Green?
Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, this is a part of the Anniston subdivision that was separated from the Mountmoren Fire Insurance District. A part of that subdivision was in Mountmoren, part was in South Iredell. The only access to the entire subdivision is from Shears Road on the Mountmoren side. So, it made sense, from a response perspective, to move the remaining parcels, which were asked by the Fire Department if they would object or, or approve that, and they all signed the petition that they would agree to be moved into the different insurance district. This is just to formalize it for the state.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions of Mr. Green? Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion on that, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'll start off with upon the motion made by Commissioner Bowles, seconded by Commissioner.
We don't have to deal.
Okay.
Just motion to.
Okay, the result, okay. The Commissioners of Iredell County approve a six-mile boundary line for Mountmoren Fire Department Insurance District in accordance with the maps and descriptions filed this date, filed this date with the Board of Commissioners, and recorded in the minutes of this meeting. Said Mountmoren Fire Insurance District being described as follows, and we have a map attached to it. And that will apply common sense to how we arrange fire districts, and basically, the closest department, they're all coming at one time, but the closest department responds first.
Correct.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Sorry that didn't show up in my electronic mail.
All right. At this time, we have the happy occasion to be able to recognize a longstanding county employee who has provided expert advice and counsel to this board on many occasions as it relates to insurance matters in particular. And so, at this time, I would like to ask Jean Han to please come up, and if you could also have your family as well.
Husband Bob, or Zach, I'm C.B., is he here? Yeah, this, this guy was standing over here. I'll put it down to you here. Uh, Jean's worked for the county for almost 32 years. She came on board in 1986 as an accounting technician, and probably within a month had broken her leg. And was out about four days, came back with a foot-to-hip cast, but that just shows you the level of her commitment to help this company keep her down. And so, she hit the ground running and gave it a pass. So, after that, you know, she worked through different purchasing jobs, buyer insurance specialists starting in 1993, and then she moved with purchasing to managing all the assets of Iredell County, fixed assets that we have. That's a lot of property to keep track of and to have on a replacement schedule and all of that. And then, in 2006, she obtained her public entity risk manager certification. And I think that's the role in which I came to appreciate all that she brought to the table in terms of managing all our insurance policies and which is constantly changing every year in terms of finding the best coverage for the best customer. And she's done marvelous job doing that, and also in particular worked on our workers' compensation. Unfortunately, we have situations where she did it on the job, and entitled to compensation, and that's a process that has worked out for the industrial commission. And she's done marvelous job providing us counsel and advice as to how to best seek a resolution that is fair to the employee and fair to the attachment. So, we really appreciate the incredible sacrifice that you've made as a public servant to the citizens of Iredell County. And at this point, we'd like to give you the opportunity to take a few party comments or party shots, if anyone wants. Well, we appreciate your energy to us for at least eight-plus hours every day, week or week. I hope not to give this to you, it's a question, which is it? Jean and Bob, in appreciation for your dedicated service to Iredell County in 2008. Thank you so much.
Okay, this evening, there are no appointments before the Board. And we do have one public hearing that is scheduled to consider an economic development incentive for Project G. We are not in a position to proceed with that this evening because another elected body needs to pass on this recommendation prior to us actually doing that. So, we are going to open the public hearing without any comment, and then close the public hearing, and continue this matter for a full public hearing on August the 7th at our next meeting. So, if I open the public hearing for consideration of an economic development incentive for Project G, and I am going to close the public hearing and continue it till August the 7th. At this time, we'll move on to the administrative matters that we reviewed and heard at length in our pre-agenda meeting, and these are matters that are typically of technical nature. And rather than tie up staff late into the evening, we have them appear at the 5:00 hour and review all of these. I would remind everyone that that is a public meeting, and the general public is encouraged to attend. So, Ms. Jones, if you would please summarize the matters on the consent agenda?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number One for additional WIC funds, which are Women Infant and Children Funds, in the amount of $17,908. There was a request from Animal Services to accept a grant for $100,000 from the Petco Foundation to approve Budget Amendment Number Two. Request from the Emergency Communications Department for approval of an interlocal agreement with the Stateville Police Department to become a secondary public safety answering point. A request from Administration and Solid Waste to approve the lease of the golf course property to Twin Oaks Golf Club, LLC. A request from the Solid Waste Department to accept an award of the Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant from the NCDQ. It's a request from the Finance Department to approve Budget Amendment Number Three to accept an appropriate Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Level Two funding, and that's in the amount of $100,000. A request from the Finance Department to approve Budget Amendment Number Four to appropriate lottery funds to the Iredell Stateville Schools to expand the classroom space that resulted in code requirements. And this is in the amount of $612,761.29. A request from the Public Library for additional, for approval of Budget Amendment Number Five for a Library Services and Technology Grant in the amount of $10,695. A request approval of application for a Young Adult Library Service Association Symposium Scholarship from the State Library of North Carolina. Request from the Finance Department to approve Budget Amendment Number Six to appropriate contingency to the schools for school project permits, that's in the amount of $10,794. There's a request from Tax Administration for approval of June refunds and releases. And finally, request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meetings on May the 10th and May the 14th, which were the budget workshops, June the 7th and June the 19th.
Is there any further comment on the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And I would say, just as, as if you, if you heard, if you're listening to those, there were several grants that were approved. I really want to give a shout out to our departments for their aggressive and effective grant-writing proposals, which are saving the tax dollar, saving tax dollars for taxpayers and providing additional services that otherwise probably wouldn't be provided. So, kudos to all of the folks that spend the time to try to mine the dollars that are available from nonprofit organizations, foundations, as well as federal and state government. Item Nine, announcement of vacancies occurring on Boards and Commissions. We have one announcement for a vacancy on the Human Rights Committee of Partners Behavioral Health. We encourage anyone who is interested in serving to visit our website and to get a copy of the application and to submit that. We will hear that matter again in two weeks, on August the 7th, when we will fill the position.
Chairman, if I could interject here, that this does require a certain person with experience on this one. The vacancy requires a person to be a mental health professional and/or provide services to clients with intellectual or developmental disabilities.
Thank you, Ms. Gaither. So, there are some requirements for that particular, so that, all of that is listed on the website in terms of the qualifications required when you're looking to submit an application. Now, we move on to item 10, appointments to Boards and Commissions. We have three vacancies on the Iredell County Planning Board, and we have five qualified applicants. And in reviewing the history of the Planning Board's constitution and numbers, we determined that the Board, which presently has nine members, was originally 11 members. And Commissioner McNeely can probably give a quick history of, since he was on the Board at that time, of why the Board was reduced by two members, just for the record.
I got mad at two people and fired them. No, I'm just kidding. Actually, we were 11 probably till approximately 2008, 2009, when we went into recession. And we got to where we weren't meeting but about four or five times for the whole year because there were no resignings. We use the term "business got slow," you might say. And at that time, we didn't have the citizenry wanting to volunteer like we do now. And so, when we had two people opt off their term, we decided just to move from 11 to nine, mainly because we didn't have a lot going on, and we stayed there. I think the circumstances have changed now. With the President, we have done such a great job. We've increased our economy, and now we're back open for business, and we need all the help we can get.
Thank you, Commissioner McNeely. The process that we're going to adopt here is to consider expanding the Board back to its original constituted number of 11, given the increase in the business, as it were. You know, Planning Board members, when, when they are reviewing packets, a number of them go out to the sites physically. And so, in addition to having a good geographic coverage within the county, which is preferable to have representation covering as much of the county as possible, and to provide the additional manpower and woman power to be able to go out and visit these sites, we think that it is prudent to go ahead and increase this number, since we have qualified applicants that have put their hat in the ring and volunteered. So, the process, however, to get there, we will have to amend our project ordinance that will require this going back to the Planning Board for a recommendation when it comes back to us, and then we'll vote on that. So, right now, there are two members on the Board who are currently serving and are willing to continue to be reappointed, and there are three new applicants. So, we are, after discussing the matter, considering to go ahead and appoint, reappoint the two that are currently on the Board, and refer this matter to the Planning Board for their recommendation, and then, once that comes back to us, vote on to expand or not to 11, and subsequently, appoint the remaining three. So, is there any further discussion or comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we reappoint Mr. Tracy Jenkins and Harry Tumis. They have volunteered to serve again, and that we hold the one appointment open until this is referred back to the Planning Board.
A motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And is there a second formal motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion due to the increased growth and activity in the county, and before we can consider appointing the other three applicants, I would like to make a motion that we ask the Planning Board to review and make a recommendation per Section 11.11 of our text amendment, increasing the Planning Board number from nine to 11 members.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And we thank those folks who have volunteered to serve. We move on to one appointment to the Central Illinois Workforce Development Board.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we appoint Mr. John Chalice of NGK Ceramics. He's volunteered to serve again, and appoint, to reappoint him to that Board, sir.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And now, we move on to unfinished business. I don't believe that there was any unfinished business identified at the pre-agenda. I would inquire as if there are any. No? We move on to item 12, the public comment period. The last I looked, I don't believe any was, anyone had signed up.
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I will inquire of anyone that is here if you would like to avail yourself of the opportunity to use the public opportunity to use the public comment period for three minutes. Not hearing or seeing anyone desiring to be heard, we'll move on to new business. We have one item of new business. As most everyone is aware, when Ron Smith, our county manager, departed, resigned to take a position at the Central Illinois Council of Government as your executive director, we initiated a search for a replacement. In the interim, I want to thank our deputy county manager, Beth Jones, who stepped up as the acting county manager during a time when we were putting together a budget and dealing with the many opportunities and issues that present themselves in the, in any given month that we aren't aware of until they happen. And I want to thank Ms. Jones for the absolute bang-up job that she's done during this interim We conducted a search for the county manager by casting a wide net. We think Iredell County deserves the very best person for that job. We interviewed, well, we did a search that was nationwide. We received 55 applicants. We had a search committee that initially reviewed those applications and boiled it down to five highly qualified applicants, four of whom we interviewed as a board and came to a decision to make an offer to one of those individuals. And at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of our board, I would like to thank the search committee for all the work that they have conducted. I want to thank all the qualified applicants for their interest in Iredell County, and after an extensive search, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Beth Jones as our next county manager with all duties, responsibilities, and authority effective immediately, with an annual salary of $185,000, with a $10,000 travel allowance, and a $1,000 per year cell phone expense.
Motion by Commissioner Hough. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say that I think we have made a great selection here and look forward to Ms. Jones being our county manager for many, many years.
Ms. Jones, we're so happy that you're here. We appreciate you. Thank you. And I'll just say that in the process, Vice Chairman Bowles and myself worked on the selection committee doing the first screening, and even from that process, I have to say that Ms. Jones just stood head and shoulders above the competition, which was all very good, all highly qualified. So, the people of Iredell County can feel very good about our new county manager, and I hope I kept you all in suspense long.
That's exactly what I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, head and shoulders, no doubt.
Okay. So, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we get to hear from the county manager's report. We dropped the acting, the interim, and all the other adjectives.
All the other names, right? Well, first and foremost, I wanted to say thank you, not just to the board, but to the staff and the community. Everybody's been incredibly supportive. I couldn't ask for a better place to work. I could not ask for a better board to work for, and I'm really excited about our future. So, thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the faith and confidence, and I look forward to really exciting things coming, coming in the future. With that being said, just a quick update and report to the board. Our renovations for this building have begun, they started last week, and we're going to have some inconveniences for about the next six months. We are doing some structural repairs that are necessary, we're doing some roof work and some structural repairs. The primary entrance will be our main entrance. There are some other entrances that we have that we use as exits that we will not be able to use any longer because, as you noticed, the scaffolding is going up, the fencing is in place, so our main entrance will be our primary entrance. There will be a covered canopy over that entrance, that ramp, and that will be there for safety reasons, so I don't want that to deter anyone. We are open, we are accessible, but that will be the entrance that everybody will need to come through, and this will be here beside, between the annex and the main building where our handicap entrance is. The North Carolina Division of Waste Management's consolidated annual report was just released, and I am pleased to announce that Iredell County is the number one in the state for total recycling per capita. So, I think that speaks volumes to our citizenry for being conscious of the environment and recycling. Our EMS received the Gold Plus Award this year from the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline Program. If you'll remember, last year was the first year that they applied for this award and received the Gold Award the first year. The second year they applied, they received the Gold Plus, which is the highest award that is, that is received. And this is something that recognizes the efforts of the EMS group for improving the quality of care for our STEMI patients. So, it's, it's very important and a great service that we provide, and it's honorable to be recognized for that.
I assume that there will be a formal presentation at a later date.
They will, we'll have a representative that will be coming at our next meeting on the 7th of August to make the formal presentation, and that's all that I have to report.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have already conducted a closed session where we discussed an attorney-client question pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A3. There is no action to be reported out on that item. We also discussed a personnel question pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11 subsection A6. Likewise, there is no action to be taken. And we finally discussed an issue concerning property acquisition, which is not ripe for public discussion yet, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A5, covered that matter. And finally, we discussed three economic development opportunities and issues pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A4, and we have some motions to present on those matters.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on August the 7th, 2018, at 7:00 PM regarding an economic development incentive of $72,000 over a five-year period for Project Transformer based on a $4.4 million investment in Iredell County.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Second motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make another motion to call for a public hearing on August the 7th, 2018, at 7:00 PM regarding an economic development incentive up to $58,200 over a five-year period for Project Knox based on a $3 million investment in Iredell County, and, I'm not done, I'm giving away more money, up to an additional $58,200 over an additional five-year period provided the company maintains a $20 million taxable storage inventory during the additional five-year period.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion?
It's wheelin' and dealin' down there, wheelin' and dealin'.
All, all for the benefit of the county.
That's right.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. And finally, behind door number three.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on August 7th, 2018, at 7:00 PM regarding an economic development incentive not to exceed $3 million over a seven-year period for Project Boxes based on an investment range between $20 million and $175 million in Iredell County.
Motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. I believe we have exhausted the agenda, even as adjusted. Is there any further business to come for the county commission? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Motion made. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.